She was on it before.
Huh?
No, she, she was on it before. She was on it before me. Yeah, I've got another number. I've got, I've got a number, got another number. Yeah, that number. It's going to have to keep up with them. Okay.
Could everyone sign in? Send me your print, your name, so we can use them for the minutes. The ones that are low print are for, are you, you already have this for the others. I'm going to give you a long case, you might not have been in attendance for the others.
I don't know why it wouldn't print it from my computer. Had to do it from ours.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you have another meeting? Not today.
Okay.
I got another person on board. Yeah, and she's got experience doing things.
Because I was just thinking, what are your full schedule? Oh, you don't have to do the agenda. Yeah, I also.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Chester City Planning Commission meeting for May 14th, 2025. It is now 2:05. Roll call, please.
Susan Dennis.
Present.
Nicole Williams.
Here.
Shirley Law.
Present. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Does anybody have any comments on anything not on the agenda?
I'd like to consider myself public at this time and ask a question. Will we be discussing information that was given to us about the smoke shop?
Yes, at the end of the director's report, I'll give you some information.
I didn't see it, so I wanted to make sure, since I do have comments.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now can I get approval of April 9th, 2025, public minute meeting?
I moved, I moved it to April 9th, 2025 minutes. Be approved with any necessary corrections.
Can I recognize an attendance at that meeting? So I, I guess I will have to second it. And all those in favor would just be the two of us.
I do have a correction, Madam Chair Lady. On page nine, it's just an omission, probably a typographical omission. Page nine, where it says number five, line two, and it says 742 West Street. I'm sure it's just an omission.
Okay.
Is that?
That's probably an omission. It's probably a typo.
It should be front.
Front Street.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm asking that that be inserted. That was the only objection I saw.
Good. Thank, thank you for reading detail. I appreciate it.
So now we're going to turn it over to the new business.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for our guests who haven't been at a planning commission meeting before for the city of Chester, I just want to let you know is I will introduce the project, highlight some of the comments in the planning and zoning department review letter, turn it over to some questions if there are may from the planning commission, but then it would be passed over to the applicant to make a presentation or react to any of the letters, and then the city engineer will come up afterwards. So for today, the first subject we have is a sketch plan, which as we know doesn't require an action for the planning commission, but it's an introduction to a proposed project. And the first one is for 2423, 2427, and Zero West Second Street, which is also referred to as 2401 and 2427 West Second Street on the plans that were presented to us. It's a sketch plan, and it proposes to consolidate two lots into one lot and construct one building with a 27,000 square foot footprint for truck storage, part storage, and an employee lounge. The plan indicates a total of 54 ground level parking spaces, of which 38 are shown to have stall sizes plus or minus 30 feet long. It's in the W1 waterfront zoning district, and the intent of the W1 is to propose a mixed-use redevelopment of properties along the Delaware River to allow a variety of sports, entertainment, retail, office, and other non-residential and residential land uses with flexible dimension standards. Just a little bit about the site context of the area. It's bound in the north by West Second Street, or northwest, Palmer Street to the northeast, Ward Street to the southwest, and then there is a 60-foot wide right-of-way labeled as Front Street to the south or southeast. Currently Palmer and Ward have no outlets, and Front Street is unimproved. Both these properties about the East Coast Greenway alignment along West Second Street. And then lastly, for context here, according to Delaware County property data records, the property at Zero West Second Street includes an almost 3,000 square foot building consisting of 874 square feet of office space and 2,014 square feet of warehouse space. So there are structures on the site. And then there's also, according to county data, two canopy structures on the property totaling just over 5,000 square feet. I'm going to skip down to my comments in the planning and zoning letter, or memo, I should say. So under section C, I'm not going to go through all the comments, but I'm going to highlight the ones that just I would like the planning commission to be aware of. The first one is comment one, which talks about the allowed uses in the zoning districts, and it should be, it's a different article, but this section is correct. In the observation from our review of the plan, the proposed use appears to align with two industrial use types. That is warehousing or storage as a principal use, and it appears a trucking company terminal could fall under that proposed use. Both uses are not permitted in the W1 zoning district. And then I have a comment there. If the applicant believes the proposed use is an existing nonconformity, it is a responsibility of the party to prove that nonconformity. And then in relation to the idea of the nonconformity, I have a comment there. It says, "In addition, there are limitations on the expansion of a nonconforming residential use that perhaps the applicant maybe would like to speak to today." Moving on to our comment two, under dimensional requirements. The applicant indicates on the zoning data table, compliance with the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance, that is for the W1 district, except for impervious surface coverage. The proposed impervious surface coverage is 92%, 92.3%, and then the maximum allowed impervious surface coverage is 80%. To be clear, the applicant indicates the proposed surface coverage is a continuation of an existing legal nonconformity. And then I would just move to the next page, on page three, where it says on the development plan, hopefully we can get some clarification on the proposed building height. Moving on to comment three, we just asked that as this project moves further into planning stages, if it does proceed, that more detailed description of the fence type and height be included. And as we say in comment nine, we're always encouraging, even in the industrial districts, the use of an ornamental fence type that obviously kind of accommodate security. Moving on to comment four, one of our standard comments about new buildings, especially along West Front Street, is it the amount of exposed panels, metal panels, that would be something that we would want clarified as this project proceeds. Comment five, it appears garage doors will face West Second Street, and as this section in the zoning ordinance says, the planning zoning department recommends garage doors face the secondary streets and the rear sides of properties. And this really is to mean a more pleasing environment on the major thoroughfares in the city. I'm going to skip down to comment 11, which is on page four. This regards to the number of employees and the amount of employee parking. We would just ask the applicant, either today or down the line, clarify the number of employees proposed for this use. Skipping to comment 13, just that we noticed on the sketch plan that the planting strips that buffer parking lots from public right-aways may not have been met. There is a minimum of eight feet wide planting strips, and we noticed maybe along Front Street, it does not to be, it does not appear to be eight feet wide. And then lastly, I'm going to move all the way to the general comments, comments 20 and 21. It appears sidewalks are not proposed along Palmer Street and Ward Street. Again, those are the streets running basically north-south. And I would say that as far as observation, even though there may not be a pedestrian need for those park, those need for a sidewalk network, it does in the 2020 Chester Waterfront Master Plan recommend that eventually those streets may need to connect down to the waterfront. So at least a community future access down there should be thought of in the land development plan. And then lastly, as I mentioned in the context for this project, we're just hoping, as said in comment 21, the applicant can explain what type of vehicle we use, the parking stalls that measure approximately nine feet by 30 feet plus or minus long. Again, those are my highlights. You have my memo from May 7th, and I'm happy to take any questions before I pass it on to the applicant.
Any questions?
To give me a better understa-
Yeah.
To give me a better understanding, I don't know if they're going to do it, or if you should do it, to compare what was there before and what is coming now compared. Can you do a comparison?
Actually, I, if it's okay, and I'll let the applicant explain that. They know the property probably better than us, but I can also follow up if need be. Okay.
All right, so if there are anyone here to represent this, could you come on and state your name, address? Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Robert Scott. I'm the attorney for the applicant. My address is 205 North Monroe Street in Media, and with me, I'll let the design engineer introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Sean Paul from Lynn Architects, also in Media, Pennsylvania.
So to address a few of the points that were raised, it is, well, 80% impervious is required. The existing conditions are 100% impervious.
No, I just, I want the comparison before you do anything.
Okay, so well, that's, this is part of the comparison. So when impervious, currently it's 100%. The proposal is to go to 92.3%. On, uh, sure.
To clarify, that is just on the property. There are areas within the Delkor right-of-way along Second Street, which are currently paved, which we're not utilizing, so we'll go back to green space. And also along Front Street, there's some area that's had some millings and some pavement put down that we're also pulling back. So that's just on the site, but it will reduce more than that also.
So the existing building is, was originally 20,350 square feet. It was partially demolished. It is now 8,200 square feet, and the proposed building would be 27,000, 27,000 square feet. Oh, sure.
And, and you're getting close to what I asked. I was asking, what was there before?
What is there now is-
I mean, I mean, what was the business before?
It is-
I mean, usage.
It is current, the, the current tenant is the applicant today, and it is a truck, it's a, it's a trash truck and dumpster. Storage, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about project size, not the use, so I apologize. It is currently being used for the storage of vehicles and dumpsters and a little bit of office space, and the building is used for the storage of trucks. The proposal is to build a bigger building that has the same use. And to consolidate two lots, one, and the other lot, the smaller lot, is currently a similar use. It is a contractor parks his vehicles there. Had been depositing some building materials as well, but I believe that has stopped. That's not my client. That's a different tenant on the, the smaller property that will be combined into the larger. So it was asked how many employees. I believe there's currently 65. It is possible that that could increase by 10%, so 72, accurate. The proposed building would have a front yard setback of 10 feet, a side yard of at least 10 feet, rear yard of 39.2 feet. As I said, it's a 27,000 square foot proposal. That is an increase. It is acknowledged that we would need to, that some zoning relief would be required for that, that relief because of, it exceeds the permitted percentage. I would point out, it's, the property is surrounded on both, all, all three sides, across Second, across Ward, across Palmer, by very similar uses. It's all vehicle, it's truck parking and storage lots. So this is, while the W1 district doesn't permit these uses, it is the predominant use in this, in this area. It seems so close, that's. So do you have, that's kind of the summary. Is there any other questions I can answer?
That sidewalk's for later on down the line. How are you proposing or not proposing to do anything for sidewalk? What do you-
What do I want, Mr.?
Could you pull back up the area? Yeah, that's perfect. So currently, we did not have any sidewalks going down Ward or Palmer, just based simply on there's nothing for them to walk to, other than the railroad tracks. Front Street is a, a right-of-way. It's been, as, as was pointed out, it's, it's unopened. Well, I guess it's open because there's utilities in it, but it's unimproved. For any pedestrians going down Ward or Palmer, they would have to cross over the active railroad tracks, so we didn't want to encourage any of that. It was to keep them along Front Street. We're, you know, having some of our sidewalks improve, I'm sorry, along Second Street, sorry. Along Second Street, keep them along Second Street until they can get down onto the waterfront versus having them come down these streets to get to a railroad crossing that they couldn't go to on the other side, because when you go down Ward Street, there is a fence that leads to a Pico substation, so that's a, that's a dead end. And as you go down Palmer Street, it's just woods headed to the railroad tracks. The other side of the railroad tracks is again a fence, so there's nothing for them to get to. We are open to the idea of adding some sidewalk, if that's what's intended. We would not want to move forward with any sort of railroad crossings as a part of this application. We'll just, some sidewalks, we don't want to get involved in any railroad crossings for pedestrians. That's, I just want to point that out. And to further clarify the size of the truck space, of the spaces, those were for the, the trash trucks.
Okay.
That's, yeah, it's a trash truck business. The trash trucks are parked there now. I wanted to show that we're not just going to throw trash trucks anywhere. They're going to be parked in these designated areas, along the sides and along the, the back. You don't want any truck parking along the front. And then the, the employees will park along Palmer Street. Those are the, the smaller space, just regular parking spaces along there.
All the trucks are the same too, all the trash trucks?
Yeah, 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 they're all, yeah. It's what he has there on the site and then at his current site, which is across Palmer Street.
Okay.
Sorry?
The size of the trash trucks, do we know them? I mean, they-
I measured them to be 30 feet, so that's why I picked 30 feet. 30 feet, huh? Uh, well, for, to go on the road, it would be nine feet wide as a maximum.
Max. Okay.
Okay, could you please speak in the microphone so that everybody can be a part of the conversation?
For the, the, the trash trucks are limited to nine feet in, in width anyway for, to be on the road. So we're going to, they're nine foot wide, 30 foot long, similar as what we did for a, another project in, in Chester for a truck depot. They were just longer. Those are 90-foot spaces for a tractor trailer. These are not tractor trailers. These are just trash trucks.
Madam Chair? Can I ask a question? Okay. I, I was just curious, because putrescent or hazardous waste was mentioned, so when the trucks come in, they're coming in empty without that, because we, we wouldn't want concerned citizens up in arms because you were bringing in more smells to the city.
That's correct. The trucks, the, the crews assemble there in the morning, get in a truck, go do a route, deposit it at several different dumps or depositories around the county, return the trucks to the lot at the end of the day. So they're, they're not, they're not storing any of the material there.
You had mentioned that this is trash trunk and dumpsters, and this, the area is used for storage. With this expansion, are you planning to increase the number of vehicles that will be traveling and stored in that area?
So I am John Blazinski. I own J and K Trash Removable. We were basically building this to accommodate our fleet as it currently is. There may be a little bit of an increase, but we're not adding 100 more trucks or anything like that. What is there now is what will be there, you know, when the proposed building is built.
Any other was regarding your employee parking. You mentioned 65 employees, but 54 parking spaces with three of them being ADA compliant. So how do you accommodate all of your employees?
The 65 employees plus the 10% increase is spread across both properties. So it won't just be for this property. There will not be, you know, just the 70 employees at this property. It'll be on this proposed property and across Palmer Street, which is where they're currently parking. This application allows us to utilize more, to utilize a better layout of the site to be able to park the trash trucks and have people not parking, you know, on the other side of the street. So it's just be able to spread them out a little bit more. This, this is a combination of both sites. So with the, the 10% increase, utilizing this site versus the, just the existing site, that would be the 10% increase, which is where the additional employee parking spaces came into play along Palmer Street.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Now getting to appearance, because we want everything to look good. You're going to make this look good. I know you, you're going through the shade tree process, et cetera. You know about the fencing. It's going to look good, is what I'm asking. I'm saying it, and I'm also asking it. And I will also want to know about your thoughts about- And I will also want to know about your thoughts about the garage doors facing front, back. What are your thoughts?
Obviously, our goal is to make the property, improve the property and make the property more appealing, you know, to the residents of the city and keep everything clean and neat and organized. As far as the garage doors that face, proposed, that would face Second Street, two ninety-one, those were typically for temporary access to a storage area, it wasn't for trucks to come in and out of those, of those two doors. They, you know, like I said, the current building there now is very dilapidated, it's half falling down, there's a lot of things that, you know, are an eyesore. We would like to get rid of that and make it a nice, modern building, you know, that kind of fits the surrounding area and makes Chester look better.
I have a question. Will you eventually have an electric fleet? Or one or two trucks, or, I mean, you know, since you're modernizing, I'm just, for future, wouldn't you think that you might need to have some type of EV?
It, it is, obviously in the future, I, there are no immediate plans for it right now, but it is something that, that we do consider as technology moves forward. There are a lot of, you know, inherent issues with electric vehicles in our industry especially, but it definitely is something that, that we continually monitor and look into as far as-
The reason why I'm saying that is, since you're going to redo, it's better to have a spot for it. Do you have a place that you might decide to put it just in case later on down the line, you know, things improve?
Yes, the building, to answer that question, yes, the building would be capable of handling that, that sort of infrastructure, for sure.
Yeah, and in connection with what she said, you may have four or five employees that will be driving electric powered cars.
Sure, yeah.
And they need to plug up.
Yeah, you know, part of the modernization of, of the building would include an upgrade electrical, obviously electrical system, which, which would be able to handle those, those sort of loads, for sure.
You know, build once and then you have everything as well.
Right, 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 plan, plan for the future.
Now, did you decide on whether you're gonna do fencing?
For security purposes, we will be doing fencing, we didn't get into the specifics of the fencing yet, but there will be fencing as, as a part of the land development process. We haven't looked into different types of fencing yet, this was just to introduce the project as a whole. And we will be looking into it as, as the project moves forward, absolutely.
Fencing and lighting and-
Correct, correct, yeah.
Our, our goal is to make it so you don't realize that there is a trash company there. Right, we, we want to make sure that, that we remain as hidden from the public view as possible and make sure it is a nice building, a nice property that we can be proud of. We've, we've been in the city since nineteen eighty-nine and, and, you know, we, we try to keep our area clean, we try to help out wherever we can and, and, you know, that, that's part of it, right? And make, make this property something that we all can be proud of.
Okay, any more questions?
Noise with the traveling of the trucks. Would there be an increase with your expansion in any noise disruption in the area?
I, I don't foresee any increase in noise and disturbance in the area. Again, that goes into, you know, building the front of it so you don't know where they're, right? It, it keeps everything away from the public and-
You'll have the ability to keep more vehicles inside.
Right, right, right.
Madam Chair, do you want Ron to come up now and-
Yes, I do. Because I kinda tried to figure out if, it says both uses are not permitted in the W-one area, I'm just trying to figure out why.
These are grandfathered uses, these, these have, these have been ongoing for decades and I, I think the W-two, W-one district was created around the time the stadium was constructed. So, so at that point, it changed, but these were existing uses.
The property has housed, in, in the past, the property has housed multiple different waste companies, for sure, going dating back to the seventies, I believe. So it, it, you know, we're just trying to make it nice and make it something, like I said, that we can, we can be proud of.
Okay, thank you.
And it is helpful to, that Mr. Scott mentioned that they understand that they may need some zoning relief on the expansion of the building, so.
Thank you very much, and Mr.?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, we provided our sketch plan, engineering comments in a memo dated May eighth. I'm not gonna go through them, I think the applicant will find them helpful. One question based on the testimony that was given, when you prepare the preliminary plan, since you're planning to use off-site parking, make sure your land development plans show that and its relationship with the parking counts. And then the other question, is it, given the shape of the building centered in the property, is it possible to rotate the building so that the offices face West Second Street and there's less garage doors facing West Second Street?
Can't hear.
It sounds like they'll take that into consideration. That's it, unless you have questions of me, of our memo.
Clarify for me, existing trailer that's on the spot, are you gonna leave that there, or are you going to remove that?
No, all, all of that will be removed, yeah.
The building will take place in-
Yes, the trailer obvi- will, will, will be removed and, you know, properly disposed of and, and the site will be cleaned up, overgrown.
I was thinking, a modern building, then you have a trailer-
No, 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 essentially, the whole, the whole, you know, thing will be cleaned and, and redone.
All right, thank you. Do you have any other questions?
We're coming in, we appreciate it. Okay, second, second sketch plan. I'll be referring to my memo dated here, May seventh. And again, this is a sketch plan which proposes to reapportion nine existing lots between three thirteen and three twenty-nine East Tenth Street to form seven lots and construct a three-story building plus a basement on each parcel for the purpose of containing four two-bedroom, two-bathroom apartments, that's twenty total, as well as approximately an eleven and a half foot by ten foot cutout in each building to be used as courtyards. Sketch plan also indicates a total of thirty ground level parking spaces, of which two are ADA parking spaces. Location is in the R-three medium density residential zoning district. And as you know, the intent of the R-three district is to provide for medium density neighborhoods with a mix of housing types. Just for some site context quickly, project site is vacant today. It did have an existing three-story brick structure on the, what I would call the northwest corner of the property, and they were demolished around twenty twenty-two, and the applicant may want to speak to that if, if needed. And then just related to the comprehensive plan, this is under section B. I just wanted to point out that this site is very close to the central business district, it's literally one block south. And as you know, Vision twenty thirty-five encourages rehabilitation and reuse of existing buildings and promotes more office, arts, entertainment and residential and cultural uses. So, as you see in my note here, residential developments near over town supports the strategies of the area by replacing and strengthening, strengthening available housing. Just moving on to some of the comments in the letter, again, I'm just gonna highlight some important ones that I think should be highlighted. In the R-three, this multifamily dwelling use is allowed by right. As far as dimensional requirements, the applicant may need zoning relief for front yard setback or should at least clarify if they qualify for front set, setback reduction, if necessary. There's some other setbacks that they may need, may need zoning relief on and they just need to clarify as they proceed through the land development process, if, if zoning relief will be needed. And I'd also ask the applicant to clarify how the impervious surface coverage will meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance and basic proposed stormwater management facilities. I'm gonna skip to comment eight. This was just notice on the sketch plan that driveways and parking areas must be located a minimum one foot off side and rear lot lines. I believe the sketch, and again, it is just a sketch, shows the parking right up to the side yard and rear yard lot lines. So some of that would have to be clarified by the applicant. As would ADA accessible parking spaces, one being van accessible, so the dimensions of that would need, would need to be on the plan. In addition, a fire engine turning template, which the planning department can provide the applicant, would also need to be shown. Just three more things I'm gonna point out, comment fourteen, that a land development plan should include a landscaping plan that also includes street trees and meets the requirements for required street trees. Comment fifteen, a plan should, a land development plan should confirm the type of enclosure around the proposed dumpster. And maybe the applicant today can explain a little bit how access to that, the proposed dumpster is handled. Those in general are my major comments, I'm happy to take any questions. I do have some photos of the site and the site plan is up here, as well as the, the floor plans are up here too, that the applicant can refer to if they like.
Is there anyone here representing this proposal? If so, state your name and address, thank you.
Good afternoon, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Eugene Pender, I'm with Velar Properties, I'm the owner. My address is six hundred Avenue Estates in Chester, Pennsylvania, or my business address is six hundred Avenue Estates. First off, good afternoon, Madam Chair and ladies of the board, as well as planning committee. I think more importantly, the project is a, as you can see, it's five separate buildings, but they're all what we call quads, so each one has four apartment units in it. They'll all be one-level apartment units with access and egress. The, it's design, or our target audience in this case, is workforce housing, trying to build affordable housing for working people. We are also looking to increase and build across the street from this lot as well. Obviously, that's in our next phase. The project itself, we did take in consideration the turning templates for the fire department and all of the recommendations that the planning committee, as, as well as the engineers. None of those, we don't have any objections to any of those. There's a few things we have a couple of questions on, which are minor, and we'd like to get a little clarity on our end. But everything else, we will clarify and then revise the drawing and resubmit with a more detailed set of drawings. The one thing that I think we had, as far as accessing the dumpsters, there will be access from the parking lot. That thing with the three boxes is kind of our turn radius showing that a fire truck can come in and make that turn into that area. Also, any dump trucks, any trash trucks. And they're gonna, you know, have the dumpsters where they can pull right up. They'll probably be roll-out dumpsters where they, we can roll them up to the edge and they can grab it, you know, dump it in the dumpster and, or dump it in the trash truck and keep it moving. I think that's pretty much all, the, the questions that we had were, I think on the engineer's note, they asked that we numbered the lots, which we understand it, but I just wanted to make sure that that was, were they asking for street numbers on the lots, or were they asking for like a one through seven lot number? So, if you can answer that when you get a chance. And I think we also had a request to repave Elizabeth Street and then Thames Street. All of our public utilities are in the center of Thames Street and that will, we will get fed for our water and sewer from both of those. Our stormwater management, we're probably gonna have our roof leaders drain to the rear of the building, dump that off into the parking area, which there'll be some sort of stormwater detention system that will take it out and carry it into the main system, just to kind of slow that, that process a bit. I think that's about it for any comments that I had. I'm open for any questions.
Question?
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't have this particular question at first, but I, I heard you talk about the stormwater. So you, you are connecting with either Delcor or the Stormwater Authority to make sure that those things are done, right?
So currently in that area, they, they don't have a separate, it's still a combined sewer-water overflow. So we're connecting into the sewer main, but we're creating that separate system, so, for future, as you said. So whenever they do come through, we'll just disconnect it from the one and add it to whatever the new line is that they run through there.
Okay, my, my other question, to be honest with you, at first I had no, I said, how did they get twenty out of that? I couldn't figure it, then I looked at the drawing. And I said, oh, okay, they do have, the largest apartment is in the basement.
Yes.
I don't think you wanna call it a cellar, I have a cellar. You wanna call it a basement because my cellar, it's a cellar.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, then I figured out that's what was happening. Okay, parking, I was just wondering about parking. What is it, free parking or your sign? Because I know some places have a sign and you have to be a certain area and visitors have to do this, what, what's your parking situation?
We have, we have a lot of thirty parking spaces for the twenty units, I think, which, in order to meet the parking requirement, those parking spaces will be for the tenants only. Any other parking would have to be, you know, if their guests come, because there's, there is street parking, we just don't-
But I mean, is it first come, first served, or you have-
No, each building will have an assigned parking space.
All right, my other question was about, I've watched developments, some keep them looking good once. It's, it's great to make something look good when you build it. To me, it's more important to make sure it's maintained. So will you have a system that will keep things looking like they should? Because I look at some developments and I shake my head. So you have, do you have a plan in place?
Yes.
Nobody, you know, this isn't, this is me, since I'm-
So, our plan immediately is, even though there's five different buildings, initially, we're gonna own them all. We may sell one or two of them off to other developers, but there'll be a required or joint, I don't wanna call it a homeowner's association, but there'll be a building owners' association where everyone will have to contribute X amount of dollars per month to make sure the grass is cut and for the trash disposal and all those other things that are required. So, yes, we will have a plan in place, making sure that the owners of the building keep the standard. And, and I think if you look at the, there should be another drawing on there where it shows the front view. It'll look more like townhouses, but instead there'll be quads.
Yeah, I'm, I'm putting that out there so that, that will be remembered.
Understood.
Yes, this, this area has gone down tremendously and I'm saying that because my father founded a church right near there. We're in a different spot now, but that's where I went to church and I watch it go down, yeah, so I'm glad to see it start to come up.
Yeah, my family grew up on Rose Street, right there, in that same block, but two blocks over, and I know that area very, very well.
You have a question?
I have a question. So I see where the dumpsters are.
Okay.
And so, what, how is a truck gonna access- And so, what, how is a truck going to access that? You're going to pull them out to the?
They'll have wheels on them. They'll be able to roll them out.
Right, okay, so they'll be able to roll out?
So I think the placement of the bike rack may have to be adjusted.
Yeah, yes.
But we can also amend that on the final revised drawing. But the idea was that these dumpsters will be able to roll out, and the guy can pick them up.
And so somebody will be responsible for doing that?
Yes.
Roll them out on trash day?
Yes.
And have them, okay.
The actual driver of the, of the trash truck is the one who's responsible for.
Right. And how are you buffering those?
So, where the parking lot is, we will probably, I want to keep a fence just along the parking area, and I think we're going to have a one-foot buffer between the parking area and where the grassy area starts. And then around the actual dumpsters, we're going to have an enclosed area.
Right, okay.
I think, did I answer your question?
Are you trying to say some kind of landscaping or something?
Yeah, we're going to put like, you know, trees and/or plants.
Some kind of shrubs.
Something to make it look appealing, or not like where the trash dumpsters are.
Right.
Which will also be included on the, the next round of drawings.
Okay. And do I have anything else? And you'll have something for the parking lot also to buffer that?
Yes. And I think we have to have a buffer on 10th Street. That was one of the comments. A short, I call them hunch walls, but...
And you said there'll be 30 parking spots?
Yes, total.
Okay. And that includes your ADA, or is that 30 plus?
That's including the ADA.
That is, okay. And any signage?
The signage, we're going to indicate on the next, on the revised plan. We hadn't put any in that drawing.
All right.
And we'll also apply for whatever permits we need for the signage and the fencing.
Okay.
You said that this was being prepared for the working man?
Yes.
So if I wanted to buy one, what would I be looking at?
The only thing we would be selling is the building, so you'd have to buy a four-bedroom quad.
Oh, I would have to buy the whole thing.
You'd have to buy the whole building.
So you had to invest.
Yes, so you had to be...
No, I was just asking, because there are folks who are looking for something affordable, you know, and nice.
Right. That's our second phase.
Huh?
I said, "That's in our second phase."
Okay.
We're actually building for-sale units, starting on Potter Street from 6th to 7th. That's our phase one.
Okay. So they're all going to always be townhouse apartments?
Yes.
Somewhat, okay, not single-family?
No.
Okay.
I don't know in Chester if you can just do a conversion from like an apartment to a townhouse, or if you have to have a condo conversion in place beforehand, but I'll find all of that. I don't, that's not our intent. Our intent is for it to be rental space.
All right. I think you answered all the questions. Does anybody have something else? Mr. Ron Madison?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We prepared our engineering review of the sketch plan dated May 8th. Not going to go through everything in particular, but when you do submit a preliminary plan, a full subdivision plan prepared by a licensed surveyor showing not just the immediate properties, but also the surrounding properties, is critical to understand how this works. And what I gather is there are nine existing lots that you want to consolidate and then re-subdivide, so that each of the five buildings are on a separate lot. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the remaining lands would be common ownership in some sort of building association?
By remaining lands would be the parking area?
The parking lot and the lot that is not having a building on it.
Yeah.
Okay. When you do present your preliminary plans, that has to be very clearly articulated in your existing features plan, which shows all the existing lots, the tax IDs, the existing addresses, and then your proposed site plan, showing the proposed lots and those lots that are of common ownership. But you're not planning on filing a condominium association?
I have to talk to the architect about that.
Okay. Because I think that the city would probably prefer to have the whole building under common ownership, so there's one point of contact, and then be 20 apartments owned by one entity versus having five separate owners of four apartment buildings. So just keep that in mind, it's only sketch plan. And then we will be looking for improvements along 10th Street and Elizabeth, and showing, identify, having your survey identify all the existing utilities. Will these apartments have a sprinkler system for fire protection? Okay. So then you'll have to do fire flow testing with the Chester Water Authority. The, there should be, we encourage you to set up a meeting with Delcor, because Delcor would prefer to have the sanitary sewer from each of the buildings come together in a common sanitary sewer line with a single connection to Delcor's combined sewer, and a separate stormwater management and overflow connection to the combined sewer.
Can I?
So we met with Delcor and Chester Water, and I recommended exactly what you suggested, but Delcor, and I don't know if it's because of the existing line, suggested that we have five separate lines, a separate line coming out of each building and going into the main. So we can talk about that further, but...
Yeah, we'll sort that out, that that may be, would be contrary to our last conversation with them a couple of weeks ago.
Got you.
Okay. I think that covers most of my, you know, we'll need to see a more developed plan, and obviously, we'll have more comments, but at this time, you know, those are our comments.
I need to speak. I think I need a little bit of clarification, because I'm looking at the drawing, and all the buildings are connected, and I'm hearing you say that they're separate. All right, can't be both. Are they connected or are they separate?
The applicant has to decide that when they resubmit. This is only a sketch plan, but it appears as if they want to have five separate buildings that are adjoining common party walls on five separate lots.
Okay, so they're connected then?
With a party, similar to a row home, where there's a common party wall.
That's what I wanted to know, because when you say they're separate, they're not really separate.
They'll have to define that when they submit a preliminary plan, because it's not necessarily clear based on this sketch plan. Thank you.
Yes.
So to be clear, it's going to be, we're going to re-subdivide it as one unit, and then we're going to, I guess, reverse subdivide is the word, where there are going to be five separate lots. They will be adjoining like row houses, but each building will be on its own separate lot.
And you're subdivide, you're not allowed, you're subdivide?
Exactly.
Into five?
Into five plus the six.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other? All right. Is there any comment from anybody in the audience in reference to this?
Kevin?
Yes? All right, thank you. I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to say, "Thank you very much."
Yeah, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, on to the last item under new business. It's somewhat like new business, old business. We did see, back in February 12th, this plan that was on the agenda, and then it was tabled right before the meeting occurred. So we did see a version of this plan before. Now, just so we're clear, there is a big difference between this plan versus the old plan, which you may have recognized and read through the letter, and that was, and the applicant can also explain this, that the building was flipped. So the loading docks previously had fronted West Front Street, now they are, or West Second Street, excuse me, now they are facing West Front Street. So they're in the rear, out of view of the public right of way. It's a significant difference, and it actually helped address many of the comments that we had in our original review letter, which the applicant did address in a response letter to the Planning and Zoning Department. So what I've done in my review letter, which hopefully is obvious to you, is that I took our old comments, included them in the letter that I have for you today, dated May 7th, and then the new comments related to this current submission, which we're calling the second submission, was in red text. And the point being was just to identify like what the applicant addressed in our, in the first version, and that was helpful on their part. What I think I'll do is I'll just briefly introduce this project, like I just did the sketch plans, and hit upon a couple of comments. I won't go through them all, because there's quite a few, and some of those originate from the original submission, but there are some I just would like to highlight, and maybe the applicant, when they come up, can, can address some of those. So the application proposes to consolidate 14 lots into one lot, demolish two buildings, and construct a 61,200-square-foot warehouse building with an eight-bay tractor-trailer loading dock. All existing lots within the project site are in the LIC Light Industrial Commercial District. The site's nearly, or is just over three acres, and it's bound on the north by West Second Street, Curlin Street to the east, West Front Street to the south, and a section of Earlitz Street on the west. It's important to note, too, that the current warehouse that's on the site, which is roughly a 40,000-square-foot building, is in midst of being demolished, if you haven't noticed, driving down West Second Street. And they did have a zoning permit to, to the demolition. In relationship to the comprehensive plan, it's important to point out that, again, this is on the East Coast Greenway, so the plan that's in front of you today does address that with an easement. Skipping out of my comments related to the zoning ordinance, I think it's important to point out that the, we did have questions related to setback requirements, non-conformities, and some other dimensional requirements, and as far as the dimensional requirements in the district, they seem to be, and appear to be compliant. And they've also identified on their elevation drawings, the height of the building is 38 feet, as proposed. I had one clarification request regarding the fencing, and I'm sure the applicant can address it today. That was just that, on the plan, it says a six-foot-high security fence is proposed, but in their site detail, an eight-foot-high security fence is detailed. I'm going to skip way back to page five, and under comment 14, I just wanted to again reiterate that by flipping the building, the proposed building on the site alleviates the noncompliant front yard setback on Front Street. That was an issue in the first submission. Skipping to page six, comment 16, the plan does propose new street trees along West Front Street, but we're asking the applicant, in order to avoid a variance for zoning relief, maybe the applicant consider planting more trees on the site, or considering even a fee in lieu of the costs of more trees to the city. We will need a detail of the proposed dumpster enclosure. That was my comment on 17. And then just getting down to general comments. We're just hoping that the applicant maybe has an update on the ownership status of the projects to date. There were some Penn dot-owned properties, some state-owned properties, possibly different agency ownership of Earlitz Street. That will need to be clarified as we move this forward, and maybe, again, the applicant can address that comment today. And then, just to make sure that you know you have in front of you, and I know the applicant received it just recently, we did get comments back from the Shade Tree Commission, the fire department, and again, this is on the current second submission plan. And then the Delaware County Planning Department has also provided comments, which I think were part of your packet. And then I, the applicant, lastly, did acknowledge that they've addressed our comment about, since it is such a large building they're proposing, that they are considering a sustainable approach to the roof, and have indicated that they will use a white roof on this project, which we welcome. That, again, is just major highlights out of my letter. I'm happy to take questions before the applicant comes up, so please let me know.
This isn't a question, but it's Yorick Street, for those who've been living in Chester forever.
Oh, Yorick. Yes, thank you.
Yorick.
Thank you.
Have any questions on Mr. Prince, or he's the ready candidate, okay? So person who is here for the project, if you state your name.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Anthony Capanigro with Kimley Horn. My office is 16, 620 West Germantown Pike in Plymouth Meeting, PA. Let me just start these up here. Hi. So I'll start off with the current condition of the property and the existing lot configuration. As mentioned by Paul, the site is comprised of approximately 14 different lots. As you can see on this drawing, that's also included in the packet, there is a honeycombed hatch on the plan that represents the parcels that are currently owned by Penn dot, and they are positioned right here, kind of, you know, mid-block on Second Street. With me today is Tony Bates. He's a representative of the ownership team. They are pretty much at the goal line with closing on these properties with Penn dot. We've gone through a disposition process with them, it's called, over the past, I would say, better part of six months, trying to get to the final table here. So I would say that within the next 60 days to 90 days, we'll have full closure on these properties to include them in the overall lot consolidation under common ownership. So, once these are transferred to the ownership team, the rest of these lots will be under common ownership, and then we would execute the lot consolidation or reverse subdivision So yes, as Paul described, the prior plan did propose a flipped building configuration. Some of that had to do with the existing Delcor easements that are along the frontage of the property, and some of the constraints we had with those Penn dot parcels, just not knowing the final conclusion of where that property transfer was going to occur. So now that we're all comfortable, we were, we were sort of, you know, brought to the table a few months ago, saying that the Penn dot parcels and the disposition process is all moving in a favorable direction. That allowed us to kind of take the steps to flip the building and keep that whole building frontage along, along Second Street consistently, and to flip the docks. The prior plan allowed those parcels to be uninhibited by the Penn dot parcels in the event that we had to create some kind of access easement on those parcels, and we couldn't close on those parcels. And that's why that building was flipped originally. So now with the updated plan, I think this really addresses, as Paul mentioned, a lot of the concerns from the city, concerns related to access, visibility, et cetera, with the plan. So as you can see here, the building is now positioned with a consistent architectural wall along Second Street. You have parking on both sides of the, on both sides of the site along Yorick and Curlin Street. And then in the docks associated with the building will be located at the rear... And then, in the docks associated with the building will be located at the rear, which faces the railroad tracks along West Front Street here. So, going back to a little bit of the letters that have been provided, some, some highlights of the plan, we are reducing the impervious coverage on the property by approximately 11,000 square feet, so we'll be improving it with some more green space today. If you're familiar with the property, it's predominantly all impervious, broken McAdam, you know, the old brick building, et cetera, so this will have a, a new architectural Class A warehouse-type look to it. More trees associated with the development in the parking areas along Curlin and Yorick Street, and will certainly bring a, a little bit of life to the property, I would say. The other piece along the frontage that I think is important is the right of way. Today, the right of way is approximately about seven feet off of the curb line on West Second Street, and there's a sidewalk with associated tree pits along West Second Street as well that exist, and you can see on that picture there. What we're proposing to do is dedicate an additional 13-foot of right of way back to PennDOT to accommodate that future Greenway Trail proposal that's proposed along the frontage. So, the building is set back further off of the road, and, and is accommodating that future Greenway improvement along West Second Street. So, there will be a full 20-foot dimension between the curb line on Second Street and where the, and where the right of way line will be for the property. So, that'll give adequate space for the Greenway Trail improvements, or any beautification of Second Street that may be proposed along this frontage here. Outside of that, I guess, if there's any questions, I can certainly answer. The letters we received certainly are favorable, we have no, no major concerns. I do have a, a few waivers that we will be requesting associated with this plan, and I do have a little bit of a letter here I can hand out to just walk through each of the waivers with you, if that makes sense. Is that okay?
You're welcome to review your waivers, but the submission deadline is over.
Okay.
You can't do handouts, I expect the planning commission to take action on it.
Well, these are the waivers associated from your review.
I understand, but you didn't submit each waiver that you're requesting with a justification for each waiver in your eyes. That way, everybody can review them before there's any action on it.
Okay. Well, the waivers that we did submit for, I would request that they be considered. The first being the consideration for this plan to be, to be a combined preliminary final application, rather than just a preliminary plan. We feel all the comments are, will comply within the letters, with the exception of a few additional waivers we would request, but want to consider this a preliminary final land development and, and lot consolidation plan for the project. And then, secondly, it really has to do with the right of way on Yorick Street that has, that has a current 40-foot right of way associated with it, and in the event Yorick Street is a publicly open road, which we're still investigating, we would request that waiver to allow the 40-foot right of way to exist where 50-foot would be required. Right now, where that stands, Yorick Street today, our in-house counsel, or our legal counsel for the project, is engaging with the Chester Water Authority, who is the adjacent property owner, to confirm the rights of that Yorick Street right of way. And if, in fact, the Chester Water Authority does confirm that they own that, that right of way area, we, we would negotiate an access easement with them to utilize that access point that the site currently uses today on Yorick Street. But in the event that it is a public right of way, which may be the case, we would request the waiver to remain it, to, to allow that to remain a 40-foot right of way. So, I believe there are the two waivers that we submitted for, correct?
Okay.
And that's, if any questions, I'm certainly here.
Any questions? Are you gonna have fence around the?
We are, yeah. So, there, there is a security fence proposed around the site. So, yes, the, I'm sorry.
What type?
So, it will be a wrought, a picketed wrought iron black fence around the property. It's six-foot height, and then it has like a two-foot section of like curled bars at the top to help with security and climbing. So, the detail represents an eight-foot total height, but it's a six-foot straight with like, with a two-foot unclimbable top section, correct? That's right.
Okay, unclimbable, you never know.
Yeah. Our best to try to, try to improve it, but yes. I, I know sidewalks have been kind of discussed here today on, on other applications, and, you know, our plan does show the existing sidewalk on Second Street to remain. There may be some damages along that sidewalk that exist, and we're okay replacing them. We're hesitant to do too much update, upgrades along Second Street, not knowing if that'll just get ripped out with the Greenway project, so I guess we can kind of come to some, you know, agreement with the city as far as what we can do to, along Second Street in the interim. And then, on West Front Street, there is an existing sidewalk along that frontage that's pretty chopped up, we're, we're just gonna replace it in kind. And then, along the side roads, we're not showing any, any new sidewalk along Curlin or Yorick Street, as we don't see a, a huge need for any folks walking down the side of those streets there. There's no, there's nowhere to go once you get past Front Street, besides the railroad roads and then the adjacent industrial building that exists on the south there.
My other question would be, what about signage? Are you gonna do anything for signage?
There may be a, a building sign or an address sign, but for the most part, right now, there's not a plan to, to add any, any, you know, major signage, but we would apply for the appropriate zoning review with the signage package.
Any other questions? Oh, you talked about the trees earlier. What about, what, I don't know.
Yes.
Is there a problem with the trees or something?
Yeah.
Can you clarify that?
Sorry.
Thank you.
So, in the packet as well, is a, is a landscape plan, and you can see, we're proposing new trees along Curlin Street. We have five new trees along Curlin Street. We have about three trees to replace some of the open pits that trees have died along Second Street, so just replacing those in the existing pits that, that are there. There may have been a comment about another dead tree in there, and that's fine, we'll, we'll comply and replace that along Second Street as well. And we also have a new hedgerow, and also on Curlin Street, a hedgerow for screening of these new vehicles as well. And on Yorick Street, again, about six new trees along Yorick Street with a hedgerow associated with that as well, so that'll add some, some new greenery along the side roads, and then internal to the parking lot. The comment came up about West Front Street and the need to provide street trees on West Front Street. We would request that a fee in lieu of be considered there, just given the location of West Front Street, it faces railroad tracks, and additional, and existing industrial building, and is really the rear of the site. It doesn't have a, a view shed from any residence or, or, or West Second Street, and frankly, there's, there's really not a lot of good space along West Front Street to add trees unless we consider removing the sidewalk. So, you know, along West Front Street, that, that dimension would require about 10 trees per the ordinance, one per 50, and there's about 500 feet there, so we would request that a fee in lieu of be considered for the 10 trees along, along West Front Street at the bottom of the plan.
I have a question. You mentioned the sidewalks on Curlin and Yorick Street.
Yeah.
You said that there were none.
There's none today, and we're not showing any new sidewalk along those side roads.
Is, is it going to be fenced in along those sides?
Yes.
Because I always see wisdom in a sidewalk around any building. To me, that, that just makes sense.
So, you can access the site from West Second Street, so if there is a need for somebody to walk to the property, they have access into the property from West Second Street on both sides to come into the building. And we also, I guess, have that existing sidewalk along West Front Street that would be replaced in kind in its location. Along Yorick Street here, we do have the landscaping improvements that we are proposing, so that would, that would have, that would not allow for that sidewalk to be placed there. Same thing on, on Curlin Street. So, the, the goal with this plan was to really, you know, beautify the site with, with more landscaping and trees, not seeing the, the necessary need for sidewalk along the side streets there. Just given the fact that you, there's no, there's nowhere to really go on West Front Street, and it, it's, pretty much serves as, as an alleyway for these properties.
And your dumpster enclosure?
Yes. So, we have at the front of the property, at the northwest corner, will be a fenced-in trash pad. Our intent is to not necessarily build a CMU block trash enclosure at this stage, really just put a, a screen fencing around it, like a slatted fence, and then, you know, you know, surround that with ARB ID for screening, for additional screening. But that's the intent with this trash pad now, is to provide an area for a dumpster to be located, you know, in the area for this tenant.
That's the front corner?
Yeah, so this building, just so we're, we're clear, is anticipated to be multi-tenant, so essentially split down the middle. A tenant would take the east side, a tenant would take the west side. And the, the ownership group would take, is it Power Homes is the, Power Homes is the tenant here who would take half of the building, and their trash would be via a, a compactor that would be in the docks in the back of the building. And then, if this tenant needed a trash pad, we wanted to make sure that there was one there for them. They could come in and also ask for a compactor, but right now, we don't have a, a tenant identified, so we wanted to give them that option.
And do we know anything about the update on the ownership? You're saying that would be in about another couple of weeks?
Yeah, I think about 60 to 90 days. I know Tony is leading that charge with PennDOT, and, and they're, they're fairly close to, to wrapping up that transition, that transaction.
What's Plan B?
Plan B was the flipped building, but I, I think we're at a point where, where the Plan A is, is intact. You know, are we considering a Plan B right now at this?
You wanna come up and state your name and what happened? Thank you. Name and address.
Hi, Tony Bates, 3111 West Allegheny Avenue, Philly. Yeah, so this, this is really a product of the discussion we had and confidence that we're gonna get through the PennDOT parcel acquisition. Our Plan B was really the old plan, where the building was flipped, and we were gonna negotiate some kind of access easement with PennDOT, so.
Can I ask, what was the usage for PennDOT before? I mean, what is that section being used for?
I don't think it's being used at all.
I mean, what did they have on it?
I'm not sure.
Nothing, it was just an open, just open land, yeah. And I think it was just a combination of the West Second Street widening that occurred, and maybe some, some, I, I assume maybe they had some storage here, or some equipment during that process, and they used it, and they took ownership of these parcels, especially when Remy's and Cherry Street were vacated. But other than that, I, I don't have an idea of what, what was there previously.
It doesn't just occur in this location.
What did you say?
It doesn't just occur, the, the PennDOT ownership, they have parcels all along.
Okay. So, they have a lot of sections all?
A lot of random spots along.
Have you had a problem with them before?
There's an issue just with the land assembly and things like that, but this applicant is running with us. So, it's kind of a common issue that we're looking at.
Yeah, we worked with the CEDA through that process, so they've been very helpful in helping us get through. Yeah, Elise has been super helpful in that, she's been helping us navigate that process with PennDOT.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We provided our engineering review letter dated May 8th. Couple highlights, in regards to the side streets and front streets, we would recommend full improvements, curbs, sidewalk to Erlich Street, Curlin Street, Front Street. Front Street's falling apart, and they're, all their utilities are going out Front Street. Any relief from full improvements should be in itself waiver request for relief and articulate why. Otherwise, they should be improved. Erlich Street, once the ownership issue is resolved, whether you're purchasing it, or whether it's, what the actual current ownership is, if it's an easement, if it's being treated like a street, it would be a private street and still constructed to city street standards. So, but those are some key points. In terms of Delcor, we recommend setting up a teams meeting with them with the connections to their stormwater and how that is done. It's really unclear, it's clear that you're connecting the sanitary to an existing sewer, but not sure where the stormwater is going.
Sure, and we're working with Delcor now, they have our plans, and we're connecting into an existing storm system in, in West Front Street there.
Okay. If we could set up a call so that both the, the city engineer, the city planning department, and Delcor are all on the same page, that would be helpful. They all are also concerned with their 54-inch force main right of way, that they not, they don't believe they have a continuous right of way because of some of the vacated streets. So, we'll have to clean that up with them, and then your lot consolidation plan may have to include some new easement sections or right of way sections for that, because there's gaps.
Can you explain that?
So, yeah, so Delcor has a 54-inch, very large force main that runs right along, parallel to West Second Street, and crossed many private properties and prior right of ways that have been, since been vacated. Delcor didn't obtain from the city a easement or right of way across a public street right of way, because it was a public street right of way. But now that they've been vacated, that was lost in that they have a gap in their easement. Doesn't change the fact that there's a 54-inch force main under the ground, but this is the opportunity with the filing of this lot consolidation plan to clean up that easement. I don't think the applicants would have any objection to that, because it won't impact their development.
So, actually, what would they be doing?
It's, it's lines on a plan and a easement dedication agreement between the property owner and Delcor that would be filed the same time the lot consolidation plan is filed. Similarly, if there are stormwater easements for stormwater management and operation and maintenance, those agreements get recorded, executed between the city and the applicant. And they're recorded at the same time the land development plan and post-construction stormwater management plans are recorded. So, it's just a kind of a dot the i's and cross the t's kind of thing. We also recommend a, a teams meeting with PennDOT. There is an existing depressed curb, which they would want cleaned up, where we try to do that without requiring a highway occupancy permit, but we're more concerned with the truck turning movements on West Second Street. That's your only access to and from the site, and we just want to make sure that they don't require a separate traffic impact study, or any truck turning restriction signage on Erlich, or whatever, whatever the status of Erlich Street will be and Curlin Street.
Yeah, so our traffic study was, was reviewed, went through the PennDOT review process, and then we're currently in for highway occupancy permits on both the improvements that you see on the corner of West Second Street for the, you know, at the corner there where the, right at the northeast corner on Yorick Street, there are two curb areas that do need to be replaced because of the truck turn maneuvers, and we're making sure that they are adequately reconstructed to accommodate the trucks. And again, that's an HOP that we have filed with PennDOT and are working through them for these improvements.
Okay. If we can be part of the conversation with PennDOT and set up a team so that we're all on the same page. The, the idea that they may want, may not want tractor trailers making left turns, because of the idea that a tractor trailer crossing West Second Street- Because of the idea that a tractor trailer crossing West Second Street, making a long lef-left turn is dangerous with an unsignized, uh, intersection. So they may require signage and that, that's a concern of the city that perhaps PennDOT wasn't, uh, focused on. Have you submitted to the County Conservation District for MPDS permit yet?
Yes, we're in technical review at this stage. Um, we received our completeness probably about three weeks ago.
Explain, please?
Yeah, so the Conservation District, uh, controls the MPDS permit and the erosion and sediment control, so, um, during construction, you need to file for that kind of permit in order to disturb land. And to, um, so you'll see silt sock or silt fences out there, that's all a plan that gets reviewed by the Conservation District. And also, on this drawing here, one thing I did not describe, just to make sure, you know, I'm, I'm really clarifying the, the, the high points and improvements here. Uh, we are proposing a, a fairly significant underground stormwater management system here. The site currently has no stormwater, sorry, all the stormwater just she flows into the city right-of-way and into the storm structures, so this will be an underground system with controlled, uh, stormwater management, so that stormwater is controlled and slowly released into the systems rather than she flowed uncontrolled into the site. So as part of this plan, the MPDS permit is being reviewed by the Conservation District, um, for our stormwater management improvements.
Those were the, the majority of the highlighted things you wanted to say. Paul, are you getting copies from North, uh, the Delaware County Conserva?
Can I pass them on?
Okay, thank you. Any questions that you have for me?
Well, we talked about two waivers and I was just wondering, um, you know, what's going to happen with the waiver?
So normally we do not recommend our planning commissions to make any, uh, recommendation motions to city council on waivers until you're ready to recommend the full plan. So, I don't believe the, you, that you have any objection to, uh, granting the preliminary final combination waiver. I think there may be some additional waivers that they may want to articulate, but unless you're ready to move the whole plan up, I wouldn't a-ask that you take action on waivers. Don't piecemeal it.
Yeah, I mean, because we don't have that to go through.
And in, in reality, they still have to resolve ownership with PennDOT, it's pending, it's likely, but it's not here yet, so you can't approve a plan that they don't own and...
But, I mean, we're here hoping to get conditionally, you know, approved, knowing that we will be complying, um, with these reviews and, um, at a point right now with the plan where I think the comments are generally acceptable with the exception of a few waivers.
And improvements. And improvements of Ehrlich and, uh, Curlin Street.
Well, that, that's a waiver that we need to ask for, because that's...
I would, I would not...
So, anyway, what, submit those and we'll have to do our justification, but, anyway, okay.
So I think with the, we want, this is a good plan, we want it to be successful, I just think it's premature to move it forward until all the, uh, ownership issues are resolved with both PennDOT and with, uh, Curlin Street. And then you can have a clean plan, we can also have those meetings with PennDOT and, uh, Delcora in the meantime and so hopefully the next time they submit, it's a much cleaner letter, we understa, and we'll understand where they stand with, uh, improvements to the side streets. That would be my recommendation.
Anything else, anybody else needs to add?
I'm going to say it differently, I'm saying it differently. Okay, um, Madam, uh, I move that the, that this be tabled, you're almost there. Uh, the seven forty-two West Front Street preliminary final due subdivision and land development application for the consolidation of fourteen lots into a single lot and the construction of a new sixty-one, uh, thousand two hundred square feet warehouse and site improvement based on the following findings, that the waivers that were mentioned and, um, anything that concerns the PennDOT proposed, uh, access. And a few other things with Delcora, waivers you have and things that were mentioned that should be cleaned up or straightened out. I move that it be tabled into those are, um, satisfactorily accepted by the city's planning and zoning commission. Keyword, table.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and now for the Director's Report.
We're almost there. First thing, I just wanted to point out the deadlines, uh, for the applications. There's, there's two projects that will likely need an extension request from the applicant. I did speak to the first one, which is eleven hundred, eleven thirty Morton Avenue, it's also known as Eileen and Sean's Place. It's the, uh, five-unit residential dwelling with an office. We haven't seen it in a while, I think it was last presented in October or earlier. And they, I've reached out to them and they plan on requesting the extension, even though they will likely show up in the June meeting. And then the one we just saw today, they're presenting, but they're, to be careful, we're going to ask for an extension as well on this project, seven forty-two West Front Street. Because their deadline is the day before the next planning commission and I would make the assumption that they may not be ready for that June meeting, but either case, we should have an extension for that project. So just where the highlights are, the ones we're going to address. The other ones have August deadlines, haven't spoken to those applicants, uh, in a while. But if July or June comes around here and we haven't heard anything, we'll also reach out to them.
Paul?
Yes?
For this application we just had.
Yeah.
Should there be a motion to deny unless it ends?
Can you say that again? You, you, you speak very loud.
Yeah. Yeah.
So my question is, because this board will not meet before their current time extension will lapse, I would recommend that there be a second motion to deny the plan unless a time extension is granted. That way, city council can take action if there is no time extension. We don't want a deemed approval on a project that's complicated.
Explain what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue, is the deemed approval, I don't know, Ron, if you want to explain that, but...
So, under the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act, and again, I'm your engineer, I'm not your solicitor, so I'm giving you legal advice. But under the municipal, uh, planning code, applicants are, are given a certain ninety days from the first time a plan is reviewed at a public meeting. They can expect a decision for approval or denial within those ninety days. So, the act is really to protect property owners from evil government agencies that will never give a decision. It actually makes Pennsylvania very different than other states because it talks about property owner rights. So, the applicant is granting a time extension for you to make a decision. Without that, if the time elapses and you, and the city hasn't made a decision for or against the plan, there's a thing called deemed approval, they can file at the courthouse that the sufficient action hasn't been taken. Generally, facing a potential denier, denial of an application, the applicants will grant the time extension. There are times when there are very controversial, um, projects in which the applicant wants the local municipality to deny the plan so they can go to court and appeal it and overturn it. I don't believe either of those are the case, but just to be safe, because the time extension is going to lapse before this body meets again, I believe there should be a recommendation in the, a motion to make a recommendation to city council that this plan application be denied unless the applicant grants a time extension. And usually those time extensions are ninety days, three months. So it's just precautionary so that if they get, grant the time extension when Paul asks of it, they've satisfied the condition, so they don't get denied.
Are we allowed to do that when they're not here?
Well, it would have been better had they been here, but you're still, you haven't adjourned yet and so this is, and the meeting's being recorded. And Paul can notify them that this motion has taken place, please grant us the time extension.
But when they get it, it does tell them they can go further in the process?
Once they give the city the time extension, that motion becomes meaningless.
And it, most applicants are abid by that extension request, because they're in the same situation. And do, if you remember, for Widener Flats, we denied that one because we were getting no response from the applicant.
Came back with a new group.
They did, exactly, but we, we, in our preparation, denied them to make sure they weren't bringing that old plan back, which we did not accept.
And it's, it's considered a new application now for Widener Flats. It's not a reinstatement of the old application, that one's dead. This is a new one.
Yeah, it's simply precautionary, not saying anything negative about the plan, it's just keeping things in order, as we probably should, as Ron said. And unfortunately, when they did the extension, it was the day before the next planning commission meeting, so.
So the motion would be to recommend the city council the application denial unless a ninety-day time extension is granted by the applicant. That's, that's good enough, that if you, you made the motion of what I stated, then it would just need to be seconded and voted on.
Yep, and I can record it in the minutes, so, yeah.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
It's just cleaner.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying, yeah.
And when I, when I say stuff, I'm not being smart, this is a learning process and I think you guys know technical things that we don't know and you assume we know them.
Oh, no, and you should, you should stop us, because really, not many people in your position do know all the details, so, um, I'm glad you speak up. No, you're doing the right thing.
You speak in the mic, you speak very softly.
I apologize. And feel free to ask me questions anytime, if, even between meetings, if you have questions, Paul and Kim can set up a conference call.
Trust me, I will.
I've been doing this for thirty-five plus years, so it's kind of second nature, but I understand, my boards, it isn't second nature. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, the, the second thing, and obviously the third thing is just when the next meeting is, but, um, I wanted to clarify what we need to do here today. We don't need a formal recommendation, I, really what I, the purpose of this was to give you an update on this ordinance, the amendment. Tell you what's happened since we last talked about it.
Wait a minute, tell me, what are you on now?
We are on...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Say sorry.
We got a lot to cover here, so...
That's the second grade teacher in there.
That's fine, I appreciate the corrections. The, this is regarding the smoke shops and tobacco stores zoning ordinance amendment. So I think the last time we met and we discussed this, we talked about the amendment, I gave you a draft copy. I think there were some comments and some questions which were, uh, appropriate because it's somewhat complicated and there's a lot of new definitions. And then what we did was we sent that draft amendment to the city solicitor and the county. And we got comments back from both. I should back up, in a sequence, I asked the solicitor to review it and then when he reviewed it, I passed it on to the county. This takes time, the county gave us comments back in April seventeenth, I believe. And now we have a more buttoned-up version that includes the county comments, they had requested that we add a couple definitions. And, uh, cleans it up in the sense that it'll fit now more neatly into the zoning ordinance. The way it was written before, it was, just wasn't written, so it would fit correctly into the zoning ordinance. And I gave you in this front memo, an idea of what we're thinking for the schedule to get the amendments adopted. Now, I'm certainly willing to take any questions, um, and even June eleventh is aggressive, because we have to do a public hearing. It may get pushed into later June and hopefully not July, but there's a potential for that as well. Just, just the adoption process takes a little bit of time, uh, just for coordination purposes. So again, I gave you a draft and I'm happy to take any questions on it, if you have any. But this is the one that we will present to council and consider, uh, during the public hearing for the amendment. No, I'm sorry, are you looking for your copy?
No.
Oh, okay.
I have a bunch of notes on it.
Oh, okay.
And I just jumbled them up, so I've got to find it.
Okay. Well, the other thing too is we don't have to address all those today, but I'm happy to, but...
Yeah, but I have things I want to ask, trust me.
Okay, okay. But I'm also suggesting too, we could talk offline, so we don't hold everybody up, but it's, it's totally up to you. Yeah, I could sit down with Aliola or... Did you find him? Okay.
Okay. Article, on page two. Article thirteen twenty-seven point oh-one-B. You've got that?
Yep.
Okay. Can you kind of explain just that section?
Sure, it's a good question, because this is where, in zoning, you have to allow all uses. And so we need to find appropriate places where these entities could exist. So we've identified certain zoning districts, the central business district and the medium industrial, commercial districts, which is obviously along the waterfront. Uh, not towards the stadium, but more near here City Hall. So we've identified two, two areas.
Yeah, and the reason why I looked at that, because the central business district,
Yep.
we're allowed to have that.
That's what we're saying in here, but then, but then there's a stipulation on that as well.
The reason why I asked that, because right now, that most of the central business district is dedicated to the arts, am I correct? So...
I did, and other uses, I wouldn't say it's totally committed to the arts, obviously arts is a major component of it. But you also have to realize that we've put, um, distance requirements away from certain institutions. So for instance, if you go down to the next section, we identify smoke shops, uh, cannot be located within five hundred feet from a school, a family daycare home, childcare facility, youth center, community center, rec facility, park, church, and all these things exist in CBD, all, all of them.
I highlighted that section also.
Yep.
Because I do have a concern, um, okay, because I... Okay, because I know that some folks put something in place without permission, so they had to be stopped, and, and, I was wondering, I, I can't visualize the distance. For example, there's a church across the street from me.
Okay.
On the corner, they were trying to open up a hookah bar.
Okay.
All right, how much distance is that? You don't live in the city.
No, but I could, I.
You do, you know, you know where I'm talking. You know where the church is, right? And you know that, where they were trying to do that, that's not five hundred feet, is it? All right, so that's what I'm talking about.
That would preclude from that from happening.
Pull through, they would be denied, because they're too close to a church.
But, that's covered in here.
No, they want to do a hookah.
But, that's in here now.
That's what I'm talking about. So, they would not be permitted, that's what I'm telling, because that church is right there.
But, first of all, I don't know, what zoning district is Lila living in? Okay, it wouldn't be allowed, period, so, yeah, so we've, we've.
Just saying, it was a bar. It was a bar. But, but it won't be allowed, right?
But, the thing is, who, you have to look into the, who actually does, goes behind it, because it's not important. You know, you understand, it's not like someone's opening a random bar. This bar has been in existence my whole life, I know, it's always been a DFW or something, you know, it's always been a bar. It's always been something like that, so, who is mandating, well, we're mandating now what can happen or can't, but this wouldn't be new.
Yeah, but they, they weren't a hookah bar be, for Ken, they weren't a hookah bar before.
So, that's another thing, Paul.
They were not.
Yeah, but I would disagree with that, because a hookah bar is defined, same with a, we don't, we have taverns. It would be a change of use, so, in, in your instance, it couldn't be allowed either, because it wouldn't be allowed in that district. But, if there was an existing bar in CBD, in the central business district.
The reason I'm asking that, because things near churches are going to be a problem. Because I know, across from, and I'm going to call this the church, Temple Baptist, somebody was trying to put up something that was not supposed to be, and, and, and I knew, the city plan knew it wasn't supposed to be what they wanted to put there. So, I'm, I'm just saying, be diligent, because people are going to try to put stuff.
You see things like that, alert, send us a message.
From what I can understand, they were trying to put an adult entertainment.
Yeah, yeah, but, again, that, that's, that's the reason we're doing this amendment, because we didn't really have a leg to stand on in, in permitting these uses, so.
Like I said, I, I drive around my city, I care about my city, I drive around, I watch. So, I just want us to be careful about these things popping up, and somebody saying, oh, it was something like this here before.
And that does happen, thanks, thank you, yeah, okay.
So, I was concerned about the, the distance.
Yep, and when we created those distances, we used what other communities have used, and it's not like we're pulling out of the sky, but then, we did do some tests, so, just so you're aware, like, five hundred feet is, is pretty large. It's larger than a city block usually, which is usually two hundred and fifty feet, so it's almost like two blocks away. So, with all those uses, institutional park, church, community center, it'd be very difficult to have this use here.
On page three, at the very top.
Yep.
The one thousand feet.
Yep.
So, that's one of them from each other.
Yes.
Correct?
Right. So, you couldn't do what Brookhaven does, where they have like, four of them next to each other, you couldn't do that.
Every block has one.
We do the same thing with daycares, we try to limit their density of them as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it got out of hand, and then, we had to start monitoring, and church, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that's why we tried to do a better job of having applications come through the planning commission and all that, yeah, yeah.
So, that, those were my concerns.
Okay, and those are valid concerns. Yeah, but, but, but those are the legitimate people, because now, we have Al, our zoning enforcement officer, out on the field, driving and seeing things that we didn't see before.
It might have come before us.
Yeah.
They might have given us a song and a dance, said that they were going to do it.
Could have.
We might have okayed it, and then, they did what they wanted to do, but, after us, then it needed to be that person who was supposed to go and see that things are done right.
Yeah, yeah.
We do have enforcement now, so we do have his follow-up, and anything we give a permit to, and he did twenty-five, twenty-four, and now, we're working at twenty-three, just for him, because we gave our permits, and we wanted to make sure that they're doing what in fact we gave them permissions to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're trying to get better about that, and have a system in place, we, thank God, we have Al, because he's actually checking what's out there, so.
Al's the only one person.
Yeah, he came to the screen to get in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not always the case the community has a person like Al, a lot of times, like, I would be doing, or Kim would be doing, having a person just focused on that is a huge help, a huge burden, that's taken care of.
I, I said what I needed to say.
Okay, good, all right, well, if, if it happens in June, I will let you know when the hearing date is, I'll reach out to you to let you know. Oh, you're talking about, I'm talking about the, the public hearing on the zoning amendment, on some forty-two, I actually think they're going to come around.
Well, they left with a huff.
They left with a huff, I mean, the problem is, a lot of people expect to be approved on the first round, but it's not always the case.
If you don't have everything, I, I have a problem with not having all of your ducks in order before I start to approve something, so, it's better to table it and wait, before, so they have everything, because I can tell you, I'm going to have everything. I don't know whether you're going to have everything, I'm not going to be behind you, folks will be.
And also, make sure that they satisfy the comments, probably, the planning and the, and the mayor.
Yeah, that's why I asked about the waivers, I know that we don't, you know what I mean, but then, he had some explanation for waivers, but you didn't give it to us.
He wasn't allowed.
So, I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, so, my last, my last question. What, have you, how have you improved this commission? You remember, we were talking about membership, all right.
You got another person, they went through this morning.
Okay, what about the young lady? Yeah, I heard, that person was on before, so they know what to do. So, what about the new young lady we talked about? What happened with her?
I think she's going to be alternate.
Yes, there's no, we didn't, not at this point, but, but, we're, she's on our list, Annette rose to the top, just based on her experience. So, now, we have that odd number of five, so, with Eartha here, obviously. And that gives us that odd number, if we had Patricia, it'd be six, and that's not some, we'd have to go out and find somebody else, too.
She's an alternate, what, what, don't you think?
Not officially, not officially an alternate.
Okay, well, listen to this, listen, you don't learn unless you see what's happening. Did you ever think about asking her to come in and?
Who's that, Annette?
No.
Oh, Patricia. Oh, no, 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 she, she applied, there were, there was three people that applied. It's the mayor's call who he chooses to take in a position. We needed to keep it an odd number. There were really two that really qualified, I would say, they went with Annette.
Okay, but I'm still saying, maybe the invitation might be given to her to come sit and observe, because if you, if she ends up being on this board, she's coming in cold.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you, how did you feel? Cold.
But, again, there, she wasn't officially an alternate, so, yeah.
I didn't, I thought that, yeah, so.
I mean, because it's just like, in my profession, I had student, students that, from Widener, Westchester, Chaney, they came to me. That's how they learn, so, we need people that you might be been considering, that have never done it before, to be invited, come look, just listen.
Well, I have to say, it was a, a bonus that Patricia applied, we thanked her wholly for that, and obviously, Annette applied. So, there was a competition, if Patricia had joined us, we would, on everything we could, our educational resources encouraged her to come. So, I, I didn't want to tell her to come now without her knowing that she would or would not be on the, on the commission, so. But, I duly understood, again, Ken and I are actively looking for courses and things like that. I actually found a nice resource that I hope you find helpful, I'll pass it out next time.
Say your last name again.
My last name?
I'm a face person, I'm not a name.
Oh, Fritz, you can call me Paul.
Fritz.
Paul, yeah.
We didn't learn to teach when we went to college, trust me. We didn't learn till.
Yeah, well, yeah, I didn't learn until I got a real job, I mean, yeah, I don't know what I learned in school. Yeah, yeah, but, what I was going to say is, I, I found a nice resource, it almost gives you like a checklist for, when you're reviewing a plan, it's like, what is, how does it address the comprehensive plan, is it making public improvements? So, it'd just be like a little guide you could use as a cheat sheet when you're looking at a plan, or asking questions. When I looked at it, you guys are already asking those questions, but it's just a good thing to have at your side if you want it, as like a resource.
We're only asking because we've learned through the, through the school of hard knocks.
And, but, will you admit that's the best way to learn, though? That's how I, I, yeah.
But.
I know, I know, it shouldn't be so painful, I agree.
It shouldn't be so painful, it took me a couple of years.
Right, and, I'm telling you, Kim and I learn something new every day on this job, it's, it's a complicated job, and we do appreciate all the time you put into this, because those plans are huge, I mean, look, I saw Charlene with her box, I mean, it's like, it's a lot, it's a lot.
I'll be honest with you, the little, the little maps.
Oh, like the one that Jean provided, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I appreciated them more.
Oh, just because, yeah, they're not so big, yeah, unwieldy.
I could see the same thing, I appreciate the little maps more.
Yeah, well, it's tough, because like that other planet, there's so much on it that you may appreciate the bigger detail of them. Wait until the digital age comes, and we just send you PDFs, and you will never have paper, that'll, a couple of years from now. Yeah, you'll need, we'll have to buy iPads or something, right, 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 right.
Okay, I guess it's now time to adjourn, so, if I can get a motion.
I move that the meeting be adjourned.
I third. All right, the meeting has now been adjourned, and it is four oh-one, thank you, everyone.
We've been in this room this whole way, from one in the morning.
That's right, absolutely, we can tell you that, that's why our cops run us over. Well, we, we appreciate you, our retirement, being here, because you are definitely assets. She hit her head and said she's not coming here with a band-aid on, who, Eartha. She's okay.
It's a good thing my, my lawn is this thick, grass is that thick. But, it's the lawn, she didn't feel. My little kids' thing wasn't. I started talking to her, she was interested in coming to the hearing, but she says she's not going to come, she's not going to, she'll come to the hearing, but not to meet, and that's why I said we just stay home. No, I didn't say that. I told her to come onto the hearing, but she didn't come.
She didn't come to the hearing?
No, because she was going to have a band-aid on her, because she don't want to see her, I'm like. That part of my lawn was unhealed, and I was, I grabbed the trash bag and. What was your subject in, what did you teach? Yeah, but, so you taught everything, everything, girl. I was doing fine until we got to some fraction of, multiplication, division, fraction.
Yeah, because she, she.
I told that girl, I said, you go to school, you ask your teacher to show you how to do this, teacher never shows you.
No, just like her.
So, that, that's not a problem, I taught that last summer. Yeah, I taught it, and they wanted me to teach it this year, this summer, but I told them I'm going to manuscript, but some of them can't even print their names. I got, I got, yeah. Where you going? When I leave out here, I'll be happy, and I've been doing that all week, because the rain, that didn't help me at all, so. No, you still are, know why? Because I said the same thing to my doctor, I said, I told my doctor, I said, I used to be a medic, but I'm not anymore. They don't tell you, next time you go to your, next time you go to your doctor, yes, they don't tell you.
Well, I go, I get my lab work, and I always check it myself.
No, ask him for real, ask for real, because I thought I was finished, and they said, he said, no, you still a medic. And that's what, those are people get cold. I'm okay, but I, but I, I am a medic. I'm taking that, that elevator.
That's what, um, yeah, I, I keep, I'm, I'm not going up and downstairs and step that home.
I've been like this, I've been like this for a week, the rain had not helped me.
My right knee.